Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first application before you is for the Asbury Park National Day of Prayer to be held on May 3rd. Second is Jersey Pride, which would be held on June 3rd. Third is the Community Spring Health Fair, which is the Asbury Park Board of Education, and they are seeking to close prospect between Madison and Bangs tomorrow between the hours of 3:00 and 5:00. Next is the Five Alarm 5K to be held on June 12th. And lastly, is a wedding on September 21st. Are there any questions on the applications? No? Thank you.
Review of agenda items for this evening's meeting?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's two items that, three items that involve the municipal budget. Resolution 2018-141 is the adoption of the budget. Resolution 155 is to amend the budget after it's adopted. And then Resolution 157 is to amend the temporary budget appropriations. This is a matter of technicality. This is the way that you see it on your agenda, it's the way it has to be adopted. But realistically, you're amending the temporary budget appropriations with 151, 157. The municipal budget gets adopted, and then we have to amend the budget. The state has requested that, there was a line item of capital cost of $225,000. They wanted to know what that amount was for. So the budget document had to be changed to break out the $225,000 to reflect $100,000 in infrastructure improvements, $50,000 for software, and $75,000 for security upgrades. There's no change to the tax rate, there's no change to the spending plan. The state just asked us to break that out, and that is the amendment. So that's 141, 155, and 157. Resolution 156 is special amendments. 158 is the city being part of the clicker ticket mobilization on May 14 through June 3rd. This is, we do this every year. 159, 160 are sewer credits, and 161 is an RCA project at 113 Monroe Ave. Any comments so far in the sense of agenda? Moving forward to the individual resolutions. 2018-152 is resolution of the mayor and council selling a parcel of 1276 Washington Avenue to Interfaith. This is the redevelopment for 1276 Washington Avenue for Interfaith neighbors. 2018-162 is the payment of bills. 163 is authorizing the city attorney to begin the MRE foreclosure process relating to certain properties, which is the West Side Community Center. Resolution 164 creates a smoke-free beach policy. This resolution bans smoking on the beach in its entirety. Resolution 165 is appointing the commissioner to the housing authority, and at the time of the resolution, ask the city clerk to be the person named. Resolution 166 is permitting the Asbury Park Fire Department to apply for fiscal year 17 program. The staff is recommending applying for five initial firefighters at this time. That number will balance out our shifts. This application is due by the end of this week, so this is really our only one shot at it. 167-
Just one question, just, I know I've asked both you and Kevin, but I just want it on the record. This is, we're applying for five, but we can either, if we receive it, which we're not even sure if we will because of what's happening in Washington DC and everything else, which we refuse to sign an illegal piece of paper for some of these grants. According to New Jersey State Attorney General, we shouldn't sign these papers. If we do get it, we can either look at our fiscal shape and either decline it or reduce the number from five to one, two, three, or four.
Yes, if we're worthless.
Yes. Okay. Yes, thank you.
Just so people have a context of what you're talking about, my recollection is last year they wanted us to sign a document essentially making life difficult for an immigrant population.
There was a document, this was, it's been in federal district court in a couple places. We've been looking at the cops grant, and they asked us to sign that anyone who is arrested, who might be an undocumented alien, that we detain. And we did have some legal issues with it. The many municipalities around the state, the country had some issues with it and didn't sign the document. My advice was we weren't signing this document because it was too open-ended. There was no checks on it. There are requirements now that when we run background checks on people, when we run them through software, that yes, we have to detain them, but this was too open-ended where it just said, "Anyone who may appear to be undocumented." So I use myself as the example of the last name Captain Bianco, does that mean I'm from Italy and don't have paperwork to be here? It just was too open-ended for any of our, so we reviewed it legally, the insurance carrier was involved and done a long time. So, but that's months down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Security cameras is 167, that's in the building. Resolution 168 is T and M to do intersection improvements at Brandon Fifth. Last year, we should be having a reconstruction meeting shortly for Atkins and Springwood. Mr. Manzella and Mr. McClave did the initial review. We looked at intersections that have high traffic data, high traffic crash data, outdated panels, outdated heads. We're replacing them as you know systematically through capital. This is the next one that we have to make safer. This also includes ABA accessibility built into the project that's required. 169 and 170 is SUVs for construction and code enforcement. This is a capital purchase under capital. You have to have a minimum life useful life of five years. That's an SUV. Passenger vehicles such as sedans can't be purchased with capital. Operationally, my opinion has always been to purchase SUVs because, one, they can be capitalized over the five-year period in the cost, but they're also better in weather conditions than sedan. The cost is the same, mileage is the same now. There is really no difference other than it allows us to do this over, pay for it over a long period of time, and it's better in the poor conditions. The process internally, for those of you who don't know, is we replace the worst, and either we keep it as a knock-around car, or you'll see the resolution getting rid of it at disposition by the end of May. So what happens is, this gets approved. Mr. Seale and Mr. McKeown, you've already been told, look what you have, see if there's anything that we can get rid of. If there is, we do it. If not, we don't. Code is actually down a car. They haven't had one for two years. Because when I was, three years ago, there was an accident, and City purchased the other car. They just got the insurance on it. So this fixes that problem. 172 is installation of electric vehicle infrastructure and services. If there's questions after I get through this, Mr. Manzella is here. This was the concession for installation of electronic parking stations. Resolution 173 is for the carbon media replacement at the sewer plant. As we discussed previously, the carbon has a 10-year lifecycle. We are at the 10 years to help alleviate the smell. And 174 is a resolution-
Question on the carbon?
Yes.
What's the timeframe for installation?
We haven't gotten that far yet. We haven't had any discussion with the vendor. That starts this week. We're going to try to move as humanly fast as possible to get it done before the season starts, just to minimize use, but we haven't even started discussion timelines to be available of the project, of the, of the carbon itself. So once we find out, we'll tell you. What will happen is after you adopt this, tomorrow Cindy sends a certified copy. I send it off to Christine and Jay and say, "Immediately get working on this. Let's get the reconstruction started." But then we still have to sign contracts. We're going to move as fast as we can on this one.
Please, please let us know.
Michael, these electric vehicles, how many are we going to be having purchasing? The electric vehicles?
Sure.
And where would they be located at?
So the RFP allowed for a phased approach. So at a minimum, they've signed up for at least four parking spaces, which means two charging stations. And the first two areas that are going to have them are Springwood Avenue and the CBD. Beyond that, we can expand this as much as the program gets used. You know, they're going to, they're going to expand as they see the car share use expand.
Yeah, thank you.
We lose any parking spaces?
Well, we're going to have to determine where they're going to be collectively.
Okay.
So-
According to, it's not electric and still parking space?
Correct. No?
No.
No, it cannot. So we're going to have to find spaces that we all agree on for those areas. I think we're going to be looking at areas that are in high demand, but maybe not the highest demand. So that way, we're not, you know, interfering with any retail customer business, but we do want them to be near where residents can get those, so.
Okay.
So it's a thought to put one on Springwood and one on, in the central business?
Yeah, okay. And the central business is a big area, so it could be anywhere in that.
Any other questions on this? Okay, we'll go back to the other, Michael.
Resolution 2018-174 is amending the agreement with interface interface, or that if it's, amending their developer agreement for the changes in their proposal. Is there any questions on the resolutions? Moving to ordinances, we have a few for introduction. 2018-22 establishes rules and regulations for GID needs. Staff would like to make an amendment to this and include language that annually the route is approved via resolution by the city council and must be submitted by the vendor or vendor by, like January 30th issue. 23 amends traffic and parking. 24 is amendments to Springwood Avenue redevelopment plan. 25 is the easement from an already proved project from many years ago for anyone that is involved with the government here. And then 26 is for amending the special assessment for the Asbury Lanes and the Asbury Hotel component aspects. Those are for introductions tonight. The second readings are lease agreement for fire equipment storage at 801 Main Street. As discussed previously, we have lost our storage space at JCPN L in Allenhurst. This ordinance allows us to enter into an agreement upon final approval of the language between myself, Mr. Raffetto, and the Jeff. Because of the environmental concerns, we want to make sure that we have protection moving forward. The ordinance 2017 amended the beach and boardwalk, pulling that one up right now for us, that made changes-
To the hours.
On the hours.
Okay. Let's just make sure, since we have so many signs down there with the wrong hours, that they're either decalled over, new signs are ordered before the police start giving people tickets the wrong way.
Yes.
So the signs will be corrected before this goes into effect. Thank you.
Parking ordinance is 2018 for Web 3, certain zones upon Web from, Web Sunset, from Sunset to Dill Lake, the entire length of Web. And then 2019 is charter school, and required on the zone for, for their sign.
Hold on one second. Yes. 2018-25 is just the first reading. That's the, an easement that you said somebody gave away many years before. I didn't have time tonight to close the exec, but I've got to talk to somebody about that to find out what's going on, so no big deal. So who do you want me to talk to? You, Michelle?
Probably Jennifer, because she's been working on the agreement.
Well, that costs money.
Me, then I'll talk to Jennifer as part of the whole conversation, where she won't start us.
Okay.
Did you want to board on it tonight, or table?
Oh, yeah, it's just the introduction.
It's nice the introduction, and this was contemplated when the matter went forth forward, had it years ago.
I just want to find out-
Very small areas that they needed an easement over the city right of way to put a ramp, a walkway. We've done this with other, like with Habitat for Humanity, when they wanted to put a ramp in the city right of way. Small-
Yeah, and I basically have no problems with it, but I'm trying to remember the planning board meeting. I don't think this was discussed.
It was a long time ago.
They came back before the planning board with alterations and modifications, and it wasn't discussed, to the best of my knowledge. Okay, yeah, it's no big deal.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move on to matters by the city council. Wow. Outstanding.
So I just wanted folks to know that there's a meet and greet for the Asbury Park Little League at the Esplanade condos on Thursday from 5:00 to 6:30. It's for folks that have donated to Little League, or folks that would like to donate and support the Little League. As many of you know, in other towns, while Little League attendance has been decreasing, Danny's been doing a great job here, and we've had an increase in children playing baseball here in the city, and they need our support. So Thursday night, 5:00 to 6:30 at the Esplanade, if anybody's interested.
I want to say thank you to everyone that participated in the Green Expo on Saturday. I think it went very well in recycling, and to thank the mayor, and Leisha, and everybody that was involved in the rodeo. It was an excellent event, and it was amazing to see how many people in the city turned out to support the recreation department. And on May 5th, at Asbury Park High School, New Jersey PAC is coming in with a program for both children and adults, and everyone is invited. It is free. The Alvin Ailey Dance School will be coming in and giving dance lessons, and at the end of the day, there will be a dance presentation. So please, if you're interested, come out. It's Saturday, May 5th, between the hours of 9:00 and 3:00. And all are invited. And it's for both adults and children, and there will be a book giveaway.
Mayor, I want to congratulate you on the rodeo and your staff. You guys did a nice job. You worked hard though, the whole week putting that together. So I just want to throw out my congratulations to the rodeo staff, the recreation rodeo. Tonight, I want to just briefly talk about a young man, went to the high school here in Asbury Park. He spent 15 years of his life working with our Pop Warner. This past, this past Sunday, unfortunately, he passed away. His name is Ellis Neal. To me, he was like one of our unsung heroes in this, in this town. Don't ever ask for anything, volunteer his time, and really, my heart goes out to him and his family. A lot of people called me and wasn't sure about where his funeral would be. It would be this Saturday. Excuse me. The wake is at 9:30 to 11:00, 9:30 to 11:30 at Good Hope Baptist Church, and I'm sure there's going to be one heck of a crowd. A lot of us is preparing for this, and that works with the churches, is preparing for this. In a way, it's a sad occasion, but it's, in a way, God bless him and I. Michael Dormans go out to his family, and they know that I'm there for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I was going to mention the rodeo and the Green Expo as well. And then this weekend is the Asbury Park Music and Film Festival, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that has some really great events. And then, Michael, I just wanted to remind you about the, I know for St. Patrick's Day, actual St. Patrick's Day fell on a Saturday, which caused a tremendous amount of people to come downtown. And for Cinco de Mayo, that, that is also on a Saturday, and we just want to make sure that the entire city is prepared for what would potentially be a large amount of people downtown.
Before I start with all the good stuff, let me ask you a question. Where do we stand as far as closing on the piece of property that we thought we owned, that we didn't own, that we sold?
The one we tried to sell, by the way. There's still some administrative stuff has to be signed and sealed, but we're hopeful to have all that done in the next, that would stay two months, and then we can have discussions on what the RFP should look like for actually selling it that we own. So hopefully, that will present it to you guys, start discussing.
Okay, thank you. It's the end of April, it's the beginning of May, Asbury Park every weekend, and we have 15 events going on. So everybody knows Asbury Park is like a place to be, but there are so many events going on. On May 5th, the Mayor's Wellness Committee from 11:00 to 12:00 at the Boys Club, Zumba in the pool. So anybody can make it. It's a great event.
I'm going to buy you a speedo.
He's trying to kill me. I want to thank the Asbury Park Fishing Club for having their annual carp contest this past Sunday, and we removed a lot of fish that are not good to Dill Lake. And I'd like to also thank Don Brockle, the Dill Lake Commission, for being participants in that, and coming up with some of the money to give to the winners. I'd like to, as far as the rodeo for recreation, it was an outstanding evening. I'd like to thank all that contributed. To those who did not and would like to, please call Leisha at 732-502-5759, where you can still send a check made out to the City of Asbury Park Recreation Trust Fund. The committee consisted of Leisha, Cassandra, Carolina Tool, Tower Warner, Cindy Die, Barbara Van Wagner, Kevin Ketti, Tamika Smith, Janice Hughes, and some of these people, be it Leisha and Cassandra, worked on this in their spare time for six months. So it was a great success. I hate to jinx, and I'm not the type of person, because I believe in jinxes, where two years ago, we netted $40,000, and we were happy as heck. I feel we don't have all the bills in yet. I feel very confident to say that we're going to net well over $60,000. So that's a 50% increase in two years, so I cannot thank everybody enough. Not only does that send more children to camp, it says hire more high school kids to be counselors for those children. So we're helping two aspects of our children in Asbury Park. Again, I cannot thank everybody enough. It was just a fantastic evening, so thank you all very much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Matters by the city manager?
No, this time.
Matters by the city attorney?
No, I have none at this time.
Okay, having no further matters, we will break until 7:00 PM meeting. We're going to do roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer, moment of reflection, please. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Leisure on January 4, 2018, and Post, All, and Bolton, for the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any member who wish comes up to speak in public session, please come up to the mic, state your name, address for the record. Each member of the public has three minutes to speak.
Hold on one second, please. I meant to do this during the council comments. I got a letter today from a Mr. Pete Kotzler from Medford, New Jersey, saying that he worked with one of our employees, and he asked that I please acknowledge her for doing such a great job with this problem. And it's Gail Brown from DPW. Ms. Brown was incredibly efficient and engaging. She is a great member of your staff. Please acknowledge her at your next council meeting. So, Gail, thank you. Go.
Hi, I'm Andy Donahue, Laz Parking 201, First Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm here to let everyone in this room, and everyone that you know, we are hiring parking attendants, and cashiers, and maintenance people. We've successfully hired 15 people from Asbury Park thus far. Thank you for all of your help, and we still continue to need about another 15 people. If they need to reach me, they can call me directly. Should I give my phone number? I'd be happy to set up an interview. Thank you.
Thank you. Cannot thank you enough. That's great, and we love people that hire Asbury Park residents.
Robert Weiner, 601 Madison. I've brought this up before, but I'm not going to give up on it. We had no results before, and I want to talk about Madison Avenue. Madison Avenue is a one-way street, a lot of building going on at the end of the street. When you come to the end of Madison Avenue, there's a red light there. According to my unofficial results, 15 to 25% of the people make a right on red, the others wait for the light to change. There's no sign there. There's also an arrow if you're going left. It's a green arrow, and if you're unfamiliar with the town, you'll just assume you're safe. But you're not, because if you're coming across from Press Plaza, they also have a green arrow. So I haven't seen an accident yet, thank goodness, but I've seen plenty of near misses, and this is something that we continue to ignore. And with all the building that's going on at the end of, with the Savoy coming onboard, we have to do something before there is an issue. At one time, I don't know what the law is, because at one time, when there was an officer stationed right there, he just waited until people made a right turn on red and pulled them over. So I don't know what the law is, but there's no signing there whatsoever. Also, if you come out of Modine's, which is the new restaurant, and you want to go across Madison, and you go to the crosswalk, you cannot tell what the light is, whether it's red, whether it's green, whether there's an arrow. You have to actually stand out into the middle of the road and try to figure out if you can cross. The same if you come out of the Yale House, going across the street to the House of Independence. So these are issues that I think, with all the building going on in town, with everything happening, I think we have to address it. And so far, we tried it once. I never got an answer back. I never saw any results of it, so I think we have to do it again. And while I still have a minute and 15 seconds, I want to make sure that our Carter-Sackman parking czar is still looking at every issue, but Carter-Sackman says he's building something, and ask him, "Where are we going to put all of these cars?" So I just want to keep that alive. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll look into that traffic late. I saw Mr. Manzella already making notes about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Wellen, Asbury Park Chamber of Commerce, 1201 Springwood Avenue. On behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, we'd like to congratulate the mayor on a fantastic event with the rodeo and the whole rodeo committee that put that together. It was a great time. I'd also like to let everyone know about the Asbury Park Restaurant Tour, which will be going on this weekend. On, on Sunday, from 12:00 to 4:00, we've got 28 restaurants in town participating, all over town, downtown, Boardwalk, Main Street, even on the West Side, we've got Kula Cafe and Kula Urban Farm participating. It's a great time. You can get tickets on the Chamber of Commerce website, loveasbury.com. Thank you.
It's a really great event.
It is a great event, and that's why I said before, there's so much stuff going on this time of year in May, that I'm sorry we didn't acknowledge that event coming up. And then you have your Carousel Awards coming up, so there's just so much going on in Asbury Park. There's like five, we have the New Jersey State Marathon this Sunday. We have the Film Festival going on. It's just so much that we forget about it, but they're out there. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I am Jenny Lofman, 225th Avenue. I'm a little shorter than you. Thank you. 225th Avenue, also the COO of Salt Hotels. Just wanted to come and give a quick update on our Salt School program. As we gear up to the opening of Asbury Lanes, we want to thank the council in advance for all your support in making this a reality for us. Like so many in our community, we've worked really hard to preserve the foundation of the past while moving forward. We had, in preparation, done our third Salt School program. We had 160 applicants apply for Salt School, and we were very, very proud to say that we'll be graduating 94 of them on Sunday. We would invite you to join us for the graduation. Asbury Park Rory has kindly agreed to be our host for the event. From 10:00 till 12:00.
10:00 to 12:00.
Yes. We have our last day of school on Saturday. It's been a tremendous experience for everyone involved. As you all know, there is no barrier to entry, no age requirement, previous experience, so we've got an incredible group of people. Following that, we have more people than we have jobs. Following that, we have more people than we have jobs, so to my parking friend at the front, we will be hosting a job fair on the 5th of May. It will be for all our graduates from Salt School for the first two hours, and then the second two hours open to anyone who's looking for a job. We're inviting all local businesses to come as well, so we can try and, you know, as part of our effort to share the joy is to give out as many jobs as we can. So that'll be on the 5th of May, and that will be held at the Boys and Girls Club from 9:30 to 1:30. So we're very excited, we've got about 150 shows already booked for the Lanes coming up, local bands, national bands, local favorites like Sandy Mac, Turtle Soup, and Dark City Strings are already booked to come and play, which we're very excited about. We're also very proud to, again, work with Garden State Equality, hosting their annual Equity, Quality Ball, I'm sorry, on June 1st. This will be our first major event, outside bands playing, and we'll feature Governor Murphy as the keynote speaker, so thank you all for your support of Salt School and of trying to find as many jobs for local people as possible, and we're very excited for the reopening of Asbury Lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for hiring Asbury Park.
Yeah, and also, just because we've dealt, not on my council hat, but the Asbury Hotel continues to support events in town, both the Women's March, the Women's Convention, just generally, all around, just a really, really supportive group. With pleasure, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Clayton, I'm at 2 Atkins Avenue, the APV Village, apartment 219. One of the things that I would like to bring up is the violence in the community. What can we do as a group, as a collective community? I mean, we all live in the same city, I believe, you know, everybody that's in here. What can we do to try to get, or what can we do as a group to get this crime under control? And what can we do to help the officers? That's it, that's all I want to discuss.
Well, can I just say something? We have talked before, and you know, in that area, a lot of people see things and they won't say anything. So it's necessary that the people, you're a cab driver, right? You do cabs and...
We're the city taxi.
City taxi and everything, and you've been here, around here a long time. I suggest that the people that you...
I mean, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I lost a mother in this town, in this city.
Excuse me?
I lost my mother in this city.
Sorry to hear that.
In 85. But, go ahead.
I'm sorry to hear that.
That's okay.
I would suggest to you, if you, and I'm doing this also, the people that you know, good, honest people, tell them, they have this call. We put, the city had put up a great deal of cameras, but a lot of people see things and they don't say anything.
Right.
So, you know, you can help, we all can help out by saying something.
Yes.
Calling the police and everything, all right? Think about that.
Got it.
And I'll get back with you.
Okay, you got it.
Yeah, the most important thing, to piggyback on Jesse, is like, if you see something reported, it may be something perfectly legit, but if you see something that you think is strange, not you, but the entire community, call it in. I mean, we have the cars out there, they can respond, we have the walk-in patrols that can respond. So if everybody sees anything they think is a little bit out of the usual, please, the only way we can help ourselves is report it. Thank you.
Finish in his minutes?
No, no, I'll reset, go ahead. Annette Harrell, Atkins Avenue, Asbury Park Village. My first record is, my first question is actually off the record. I would like to know why we only have three minutes in a city council meeting. Reason why I'm asking that is because I did my research, and actually, technically, we should have up to 15 minutes to speak when it's dealing with concerns and issues that's dealing with the community. Also, the lowest that you can actually provide is five minutes? I feel like you can't express your feelings on certain things if you don't have a limited time, especially when we all sit here and we have to, we actually listen to you guys before you open up to the public. Can somebody answer that?
Finish your three minutes.
Okay, and with that, because I know it's a public forum, that's the words, the title for that, my first issue is with the schools, the children, and the teenagers. I'm just gonna keep going. The murders, the violence, and the shootings. The Housing Authority, police involvement, and the segregation, and I must say it again, segregation between the west side and the east side. It's very real, it's live. I don't understand how you can say that it's none, because for the fact that, on our side, a lot of stuff is not being done. Yes, you can do a few things and say you have this program and that program, but in reality, the violence is still there, the issues are still there, the crime is still there, and why just on that side? There's a lot being done on the opposite side of the tracks. And the question from me to you is, why is that? We get hushed because we get a park that's built over there, it's new, it's nice, and there's a lot of activity, but there's not a lot of African-American activity concerts that go on. And I'm saying that from facts, because I've been over there to a few of the functions that's there. I just have so many questions, because so much is not being told to the community of the west side and the east side that should be known from the council. Again, the Housing Authority had a murder, I came to y'all months ago, maybe last year, actually, and I spoke to y'all directly, directly to the mayor, and I asked you for help. I asked you, I told you the situation, you didn't help me with that. You didn't even answer my questions. You basically came to me afterwards and asked me, was it taken care of? And it wasn't. So how do I put my faith and trust in a council when I see things that are still being done that shouldn't be?
Okay, I'm gonna cut you off because your three minutes is up. We'll get back to you as far as the legality of the three minutes, it's a good question, I don't think we're breaking any laws. As far as like your other concerns, and we've told everybody, you don't have to wait two weeks to come to a council meeting, to make complaints, make charges, do anything. I have a listed phone number, people have called me, a lot of people in this room have called me every day. I will set up a meeting with you anytime, with any director, the city manager, whenever you want. You say, I didn't help you, I don't remember your question, but I mean, I think the Housing Authority and the City of Asbury Park Police Department did an excellent job in solving that by working together, so there's a lot of things behind the scenes that you're not aware about, and we're not gonna tell you in public where the cameras are and who's doing what. And sorry, that we can't do, but as far as an open-door policy, you tell me when and where I'll be there, you can come to my house, we can meet at the City Hall, and tell me when you would like to meet and I'll be there, to follow up on any of your concerns.
Okay, just to meet with you, and...
No, and any department head, or any, we can only have one other council person, by law, or we break the sunshine law, and any department head you want to be there to address any of your concerns, and we've done that since day one. So for anybody to say like, we don't address concerns, really like hits me in the guts, because I do not believe that. Your time's up, so I appreciate it.
I understand that, but it doesn't say that I can't come back up and speak again.
Yes, it does.
Where is that rule at, in regulation?
That's our policy.
That's your policy where? Can I see that?
I'm telling you, that's our policy.
You're telling me, but I'm asking you, Mayor, can I see it?
I believe that is set forth...
I need proof saying that.
...in the annual resolution that's adopted by the council establishing the meetings for the year ahead, as well as the protocol for the meetings. So that can be provided.
And that's why I said at the beginning, we'll check into it and get back to you.
Well, I can also comment on that. The Open Public Meetings Act, which is also known as the Sunshine Law, which governs transparency of proceedings involving a governing body, provides that the municipal governing body shall be required to set aside a portion of every meeting of the municipal governing body, the length of the portion to be determined by the municipal governing body, for public comment on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the municipality. This governing body has made a determination, again, a policy call, to limit that time period to three minutes per person, the rationale being that there is, there are many members of the public who frequently come to the microphone in Asbury Park, and if members of the public were permitted to speak for an unlimited period of time, or a longer period of time, it could delay the ability of the governing body to take care of the business that they have to get to. As you can see, the agenda's very long this evening, and there's always a lot of business for the governing body to attend to. The three-minute limitation that Asbury Park has determined is a similar provision that many municipalities in the state of New Jersey have. It's not just Asbury that has a three-minute time limit.
I'm aware of that.
I'm sure that you can find, if you look at the requirements in other governing bodies, that there are many that similarly have the three-minute time limit. If you have any authority that you're relying on indicating that the three minutes is inadequate, we'd be happy to take a look at it, but I am not aware of any court decision or any other authority that says that the municipal governing body cannot limit the time period to three minutes.
Yes, I'm aware of that, and I did not say that they cannot, I just said that it is not fair to have a three-minute limit when there's, a person may have more than one issue to discuss, and it's just not enough.
Okay, thank you.
And that is a different issue, the legality versus the policy call.
Felicia Simmons, Little Avenue, Asbury Park. Evening. I'm coming, you know why I stand here.
A little louder.
I'm tired, as you know, I've been running all day. I'm calling, I'm here because of the foreclosure on the West Side Community Center. I just would like to know, is there a plan that can be released to the public? Just a plan, just the idea, direction, something that we can know, so it's just not bam, it hits you, or whatever, we just want to know, a plan. Is there a plan?
Are you done with all your questions?
That's it, I'm tired today.
Yes, the plan was to start an in-rem foreclosure, because they had to April the 13th to appeal the 45 days. We told everybody, don't come to the April 11th meeting, that we'll do something at this meeting, so at this meeting, we're starting the in-rem foreclosure. That's the plan.
And that is because it's our understanding that no appeal to the appellate division has been filed regarding the tax court decision that upheld the assessor's denial of the continued tax-exempt status for that property. So as a result, the lien that has accumulated for unpaid taxes on that property remains a valid lien that the city holds. And the city now is proceeding with the resolution that's on the agenda this evening, to pursue an in-rem tax foreclosure action, to foreclose on that tax sale certificate and actually acquire those properties.
Okay, and I got a couple. And how fast is the foreclosure process? I know it's different than a normal foreclosure.
There are notice requirements, but it should be completed within three to six months.
Okay, wow, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Felicia.
Hello, Mayor and Council, Jerry Scrannell, Long Branch. I hope everybody's okay. Now, what I wanted to say is, I was on the Turnpike a couple of days ago, and I saw a real nice ad for Asbury Park, and I was just wondering, if we're paying for it, Chamber of Commerce is paying for it, maybe we could get a sponsor like Wells Fargo, or Asbury Hotel, or somebody to pay for that billboard? But it was really nice coming down the highway seeing it. Then the other thing is, if Chamber of Commerce or Madison Marquette's paying for that ad, and they could get a sponsor, maybe they could use the money for that ad for the Fresh Air Fund for Kids. Guys, I'm giving you a good idea, Mike, maybe you could write it down. Maybe you could use the money to bring in kids from the Fresh Air Funds from the city to come to Asbury Park, and we could get some publicity out of that, or have a family of four write a letter why they think Asbury Park should be a good vacation place for them. It's just an idea to parlay that. Then the other thing is, I'd like to know what our goals were for this year, and have you even reached halfway of what the goal is? What are our goals for our city manager? I'd like to know what other projects are being started on the beachfront, because now that the new building is, already got used up its fame, maybe they'll have a grand opening, but we should have some other groundbreaking projects. I'd like to know about that. I'd like to know, what talks have you had with Madison Marquette or I-Star about restoring the convention hall? It's not fair, because you give everybody tickets for, our code enforcement gives tickets to poor old ladies on the west side. I think convention halls should be getting summoned every week for not being repaired. That's about it, could I get some answers, please? I gave you a lot of good questions, so if you answer half of them, that'd be good, too.
Sit over while we get more questions.
State of the city address, I've been, the link went on, so when they say the goals of the city manager, I think she can say, they should probably say, get it done faster. The billboard is an I-Star billboard? That's...
You can talk to I-Star right there? About your thoughts on it.
Okay, no, I just said I share the idea.
Is that bad?
No, so your goals, what are your goals? Michael, I'd like to know what your goals are for the year.
My goals?
Yeah.
Well...
I'd like to see you move into town, that way we could see you all the time.
You live in Long Branch?
Listen, I was here long before you thought you'd even come here, and I was here before most of the people were here. So let's not hear that. If it wasn't for my participation, you wouldn't have a job.
Thank you, Jerry, you're the minister.
So what is your goals? What are your goals?
My goals are presented to the council first, and then we'll discuss them publicly.
Okay, so council, I'd like to hear what your goals are, I mean, we've been traveling this road for a couple of years, okay, and then what about...
You say that, Jerry, I mean, I'm gonna take some exception to that, because we've got transition...
What about convention hall? What are we gonna do about restoring that building? That's the premier building.
Whoa, 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 one person at a time.
Boy.
And Jerry, if your time's up, Amy, if you had something to say?
No.
No one has a goal for their convention hall?
The answer for convention hall is, they are not in default of anything. If they were in default of anything, we would hold their feet to the fire as we did when they were in default of the Fifth Avenue bandstand.
John, the panels are still missing.
Jerry, they are not in default of the contract that was signed in 2002 and renewed in 2006, there's nothing we can legally do. When they were in default of the bandstand, this council took them to default and made them, you see the renovations going on now. If we did not force that issue, they probably would not be going on.
Okay.
So as soon as we can force an issue that they are in default, we will. But at this point in time, they are not in default.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, thank you.
To that point, we force issues in terms of their default, even for the mural, we held them in default, and they didn't finish their mural on Stella. So to reiterate John's point, is we have gone through that agreement repeatedly and held them in default where we saw that we could.
No, we just gotta talk about it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Curtis Moreland, 115 Dwood Avenue, from Jersey With Love. Just to piggyback on the whole, the in-rem foreclosure, just a couple of questions to Michael, attorney. In tax court, we were told that it would be a possibility about payment, a payment plan for this tax debt. We haven't even gotten a tax bill to really know what the total amount is owed on these taxes. That's number one. Went to the tax office, they'd be giving us, not the runaround, I don't want to say anybody's giving us the runaround, but we haven't gotten a real bill of what the taxes is, to know what the amount is, what the total amount is. We know what the assessment was, but we still don't have a final bill on what the taxes is for those properties. Number two, I just need to clear some things up. I need city officials and city people to stop saying that I'm running an illegal business at 115 Dwood Avenue. That is not the truth. We are a registered nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) by the IRS, as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. I am not, I'm gonna say it again, running a for-profit business at that facility. The only thing that's running out of that office at 115 Dwood Avenue is from Jersey With Love, a registered nonprofit of New Jersey, and now a certified 501(c)(3) by the IRS, just so we could put that out there. So again, when I first came here to talk to the council about my participation and involvement with the West Side Community Center, I invited everyone to make a phone call, come visit, come see... call, come visit, come see us, come talk to us. It's now May. I haven't heard from anybody. So I'm going to ask you, and like an audible response, Mayor John, have you reached out to, from Jersey With Love?
Finish your three minutes.
No, I want an audible response. Have you reached out?
I'm going to answer when your three minutes are up.
All right. I would like an audible response from my whole council, because this is my mayor and city council. And I am a nonprofit in your city, a registered nonprofit in the city of Asbury Park.
Question, are you running the West Side Community Center? Are you, are you on there?
I'm not on the board.
I want to know.
Councilman Kendall?
Yes.
Who I am is, I am the representation for the West Side Community Center legally.
I understand.
And my nonprofit.
But did you hear what the lawyer said?
My nonprofit is here.
Did you hear what the lawyer said?
My nonprofit is there to move the facility forward and get the agency moving forward. Like I expressed to you before, that's what my nonprofit is there for. So I'm asking for the help of the city council to at least come down and sit down and talk. Nobody has come to see us at all. And you're my mayor and city council.
I understand that, but we were told not to. We can't.
No, no, the legal stuff is done, Councilman. The legal stuff is finished. So now we have no excuse.
We're not arguing, man.
We're not arguing. I'm just saying, we have no legal, we have no legal stuff going through.
And talk to you. Is that good enough for you?
We have, I passed out my cards and numbers to everybody.
You didn't ask my question.
Whenever you want to come, I'm going to make time for you.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
And anybody else, any of our other council members and our mayor, I'm going to make time.
Thank you. Curtis, I've never reciprocated your invitation because you're Jersey With Love. Whenever I was invited by Lori, Rose, Yvonne, Reverend Bradley, Reverend Oates, I was there many times. And you can ask those five. And that was the board of directors. We have never gotten anything from that board of directors that you are representing them. You're making that allegation tonight that you're representing them. Tell them to send us a letter that you're the representative and I will be there at your request.
But regardless.
No, no, no.
Hold on, no, I'm just saying.
No, your time is up.
It's two separate entities. This is what I'm saying to you. Regardless.
Well, if the entity.
The West Side Community Center LLC is an entity in itself. From Jersey With Love is a completely different entity. So you should have been made to come sit down at the table to meet regardless, because I'm here in this city to help and to put programming together and get stuff done for Asbury Park.
And you represent.
Regardless of where I'm housed at, I'm still a registered nonprofit, 501(c)(3) in the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey.
Okay, and you just represent yourself as being the spokesperson for them.
And I am.
They've never sent us anything to that effect. Please have them send us something to that effect. Please.
I'll have that sent over. And then after, after that, we should be able to have a conversation.
I'll be there in a heartbeat. And you can ask them if I ever missed a meeting. All five of them will say, absolutely not, Curtis. Mr. Moore's been anytime, anyplace we've asked him to go.
All right.
All right, Randy Thompson from Park Avenue.
Excuse me one minute. I want to clarify something. Should I still go see this man tomorrow or should I wait for the letter?
Wait for the letter.
Okay. Now you understand? Okay, so we wait for the letter, then we get.
I'll send the letter tomorrow. We'll leave that.
Then we get together then. Is that fine with you?
That's fine.
Okay.
Yep, Randy.
Hi, Randy Thompson, Park Avenue. I want to follow up on your comment, Mayor Moore and Councilman Kendall, about how if you see something, say something, and that's going to help our crime issue. Well, I saw something and I said something. Late last year, my daughter was being cyber harassed. And I'm sorry if this is uncomfortable to hear, but I think it was uncomfortable for my kid to hear. She was being harassed continually, being called a transphobic dyke, a coked-up whore, she should go kill herself. I'm not going to go down the whole list. But anyway, we called the cops. I said, let me do the same thing, get the people who are paid to resolve this issue involved. They came over, they said, you have to come down and file a complaint. When I was met at the door with a detective and a uniformed Asbury Park police officer, they said, you know the kid who's harassing your daughter is the son of a cop. I said, whoa, 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 why does that matter one bit? They said, oh, you're right, it doesn't. So they said, you'll have to come back and sign the complaint. They said, get back in touch with us after the holidays. I said, it's a little long, but okay. Called after the holidays, called again after the holidays, called again after the holidays. I started recording it in March, five times. I eventually ended up emailing and contacting all of you, the leadership, saying, what's going on with this case? I didn't get a response, so I had to call the prosecutor's office. This is Detective April Byrd and Detective Sergeant Couselech. Okay, we're going to get to this. Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office finally got back to me, said Detective April Byrd, Mr. Thompson, said, you wanted the case closed and you didn't want to go forward with the charges. So I called back here. That's when I speak to you, Mayor Moore, and you say, send an email to the chief of police. So finally, I get Detective Sergeant Couselech on the phone who says, well, Mr. Thompson, if the case is closed, that's probably because it's just appearing that way in the system, that they're investigating. If they got the case, the case has to go up to prosecutor's office in order for them to take action. I say, you know, something doesn't sound right, but I don't know everything. But I'm also not stupid. So I hung up the phone and I called the prosecutor's office again. And I said, did you have that case before? They said, they just sent it over. So not only do you have the detective lying about it, you also have the superior lying about it. So eventually, they acted on addressing the issue with the one officer. But please tell me why these people who siphon 25 cents out of every penny, every dollar of our $40 million budget are paid on our dimes, are giving me a hard time, lying about it, not doing their job protecting their friend's son when there's a crime committed? Again, in the context of see something, say something. I would like the responses on that and what your willingness is to have accountability and transparency going forward.
You done?
Done. Well, there's 20 seconds left.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to hear that, if I could, your response.
We've talked before about it, and you're right, I did have you get in touch with the police chief. And you know, as being on the charter commission to former government, the mayor and council cannot talk to personnel. So I could not pick up the phone and talk to the police chief. So what I did was forwarded to the city manager and it's being looked into. It's a personnel issue and I'm not going to respond on a personnel issue in public.
Or a court investigation, investigations involving a juvenile.
Right.
Well, I'd like to know, you know, going forward, you know, if this cop committed perjury in a police report, what action was taken? Do I have the right to know that? Or are you not going to give me that right?
I, I would think you have the right. I don't know where that, I don't know, I don't know where the investigation stands.
As per AG guidelines.
Okay. Is the investigation still ongoing or what?
I'm not going to comment on it.
Okay.
The letter I received said it was closed and it was substantiated. But again, as the policymaking body, in this form of government, you could change those guidelines. You could add transparency and accountability.
You can't, we can't change the attorney general's laws.
So where does he go from here?
There's much more to this than what Mr. Thompson said.
They've done it in a number of municipalities. The city manager is the appropriate authority. He can designate a populous body that has oversight and accountability.
No, we've been through this. There's no legal mechanism to do that.
You're the appropriate authority under state statute, under Title II.
I do not have the ability to make laws.
That's, that's not true. They've done it in other cities. I mean, we can follow up.
They've only done it in Newark, and that was a federal consent decree, which two months ago, the judge ruled overstepped its bounds, took away from the advisory board, where Mayor Barakas said he didn't agree with it, and he wants the advisory board to have more power. It was only done in Newark in the state of New Jersey, under a federal consent decree, because it was Newark and Department of Justice. That is the only place, and we've told you this before, at these meetings in New Jersey that does that. That, that's it. The AG guidelines.
Then your next step would be petitioning the AG to allow you that power if you have a concern on this issue. If this issue matters to you, that our cops are lying and perjuring themselves, making it harder for residents to just use their services, where I got to jump over loops going to the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office, then that would be your next step, saying, Gruel, AG Gruel, you need to change these AG guidelines so us in Asbury Park can have transparency and accountability, because our city manager wants to make a populous body that's going to take care of that.
I know.
Well, then that's, you know what, Michael?
Okay, okay.
Sorry, but that's my kid, and I think I have a right to feel safe in my neighborhood by all odds, not have them be the criminal.
Thank you, Randy.
You're welcome.
Motion to close?
Move it, second. Move on to minutes. We have three sets of minutes this evening. You have executive session minutes of April 11th, workshop minutes of April 11th, and regular sets of minutes of April 11th. Can I have a motion to adopt those minutes, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Clinton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is a ceremonial resolution. It's Resolution 2018-175, which is a resolution recognizing April as Get Yourself Tested Month. I know that someone wishes to speak, but can we have a motion, please?
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
So this request came in from Planned Parenthood and a lot of work they do. Maggie, if you want to just get to the microphone and talk about Get Tested and any other events you're doing in Asbury Park.
Yeah, of course. First and foremost, so my name's Maggie. I'm a representative from Planned Parenthood Action Fund of New Jersey, and I want to thank the council for taking the time to pass this ceremonial resolution on behalf of April as Get Yourself Tested Month. I'm a nationwide campaign to encourage young people and all people to get themselves tested for STDs and HIV. We are, of course, passing local resolutions and proclamations, as well as also hosting community events called the Condom Crawl, which will be in Asbury Park this Saturday. For any more information on that event, you can visit ppactionnj.org. But it's an event to kind of let the local population know that this is Get Yourself Tested Month and information about our local health center in Trubury.
Thank you.
Do you want a copy of the resolution, just so you have it? Maggie, do you want a copy of the resolution? Yes.
Next, we're going to move on to the adoption of 2018 budget. Resolution 2018-141 is adoption of the 2018 municipal budget. Due to the amendment that we need to, we need to table this. Can I have a motion to table, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-155, a resolution to amend the 2018 calendar year budget.
If I, if I'm going to have to look at that on the sun, like every week, Michelle, I at least want to not be like staring off into space.
Can I have a motion to approve this resolution, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Well, on consent agenda resolutions, Resolutions 2018-156, which is a resolution approving special vet applications. Resolution 2018-157, resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for the 2018 budget. Resolution 2018-158, resolution support clicket and ticket mobilization for May 4th through June 3rd, 2018. Resolution 2018-159, resolution to credit sewer account, and this is for 1319 Asbury Avenue. Resolution 2018-160, resolution to credit sewer account for 300 Emory-Cookman Avenue and Bangs. And Resolution 2018-161, resolution approving award of contract for the regional contribution agreement project. This is for 1113 Monroe Avenue. Does anybody wish any of those resolutions to be pulled from the consent? Hearing none, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Move it. Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
On to individual resolutions. Resolution 2018-152, resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Asbury Park designating Interfaith Neighbors, Inc. as a redeveloper of the parcel known as 1276 Washington Avenue and Washington Avenue redevelopment area and approving redevelopers agreement between the city of, the city and Interfaith Neighbors.
And this would be with the change made per the discussion of earlier to require closing no later than four months from the date of execution.
Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-162, resolution approving the payment of bills. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-163, resolution authorizing in-rem foreclosure proceedings relating to certain real properties located within the city of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion, please?
West Side Community Center property.
Motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-164, resolution creating a smoke-free beach policy. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-165, this is a resolution authorizing appointment to the housing authority. There are three members up for reappointment, Angeline Brown, Frank Syfax, and Charlotte Weiss. If this was approved, their term would expire on April 30th, 2023. Can I have a motion to adopt, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-166, a resolution to permit the Asbury Park Fire Department to apply for the F-2017 safer grant. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-167, awarding the contract to Millennium Communications Group for security cameras. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-168, authorizing professional services contract to T&amp;M Associates to perform services for intersection improvement at Brand and Fifth Avenue. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-169, resolution authorizing the purchase of an SUV for the construction department. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
No.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-170, resolution authorizing the purchase of a SUV for the code enforcement department. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Council, Deputy Mayor Quinn? Council, uh, Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, no.
Sure.
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-171, resolution authorizing the purchase of parking pay stations. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions?
Yes, can you explain that? You can't explain it. Okay, go ahead.
You can.
Michael can explain it.
Well, that's, that's, did we move in second?
Yes, we did.
Okay, Michael, explain, please.
These are parking pay stations for the ordinance that's on the agenda for second reading this evening.
We're putting more.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
No.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-172, resolution awarding contract for the installation of electric vehicle infrastructure services. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-173, resolution awarding the contract to Nickel Company for carbon media replacement. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-174, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park, acting as the redevelopment entity, approving and authorizing amendment to agreement with Interfaith Neighbors, Inc., regarding redevelopment of certain properties within Springwood Avenue redevelopment area. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
We're on to ordinances, ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 2018-22, an ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending Chapter 7, 8, establishing Article 3 jitneys. Can I have a motion to introduce this ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Move to amend?
We can, we can intro-, to, move to introduce it with an amendment, if that's your intention.
Yeah, our intention is to move to introduce it with an amendment.
And what is that amendment?
The amendment is final approval of the roots of the jitney is determined by the council.
In Janu-, January 15th of each year.
The vendor must submit, shall submit a root list by January 15th for council approval of that.
Although, in this circumstance, they, they aren't going to keep-
Yeah.
The roots need to be run by us.
Annually.
So, the ordinance has been moved, has amended by Deputy Mayor Quinn, and it needs a second.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.